I'd like to call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he would lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise for our invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful again that we can be here in your presence. We're thankful again, Lord, that we can be here to celebrate the lives of children, our lives, and the lives of this community. We thank you for the joyous times that we have. We thank you for the wonderful smiles that we can see and these teachers can see every day as they walk in their classroom. We're thankful that you gave us a good, successful year, a safe year, and, Lord, we pray that you be with each and every one of these teachers, these administrators, our central office staff, all the way down, Lord, our custodians, our bus drivers, everyone involved with public education. We pray that you be with them. We pray that you be with this board and help us, Lord, to make the best decisions and the right decisions for these children of this county. Grant us the wisdom to make these decisions. Guide us and direct us, Lord, in all that we do. We give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Our next regular board meeting will be announced in a timely fashion when we get everybody on the same page of when we're going to be here. It's summertime, there's a lot of conferences going on that board members will be attending, and, of course, activities other than, you know, vacation times and that sort of thing. So, we're going to work around where most everybody can be here for the July meeting because we've got a lot of important things coming up for next year. And so, we will announce that in a timely fashion, but, of course, it'll be handled here at the Education Center at seven o'clock when we decide the actual date. We do need to add one item to the agenda tonight for discussion in open session between item number fifteen and sixteen. Please remind me if I do skip over it. I do make mistakes, as has been pointed out on numerous occasions. But we do need to add an item under item fifteen for discussion on coaches, supplements at each of the, throughout our schools. Board members, y'all have any announcements at this time? I'd just like to say that I heard that the graduations were great, that everything went very well, and congratulations to all of our graduates and that we had a, as far as I know, we had safe travel over and back from each of the graduations and the graduations that were held here in the county. So, congratulations to all the graduates. Thank you for the hard work that you've done and good luck in the future and your future endeavors. Let's see, was there anything else I needed to do? Okay. I think we've got everything covered. Now, we have some recognitions. I think Dr. Nolte is going to carry on with those. Special recognitions.
Feel like I'm eating your lap. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, staff and guests, as you know, at the end of each sports season, we recognize conference champions, undefeated teams, individual champions, and those folks who make their way into regional and state competition. And when we had our last meeting, our middle school folks were finished and we were able to recognize them, but our high school folks weren't quite through. So, tonight, we want to recognize our high school folks. And the first person that I would like to introduce is the golf coach from Tuscola High School, Rick Constance. Coach?
I'd like to thank the school system, Rodney Mashburn, for giving me the opportunity to coach the boys, Tuscola Boys Golf Team this year. The award we have tonight for Christian Constance is the Player of the Year, Conference Player of the Year. I can tell you that Christian is, he spent a lot of time at my house and I've got to know him pretty well. We have golf balls all over the yard, neighbors' yards. But I will tell you that Christian is very serious about his golf and he has worked hard. You can't accomplish these things, and I know you coaches know and the kids know. You can't, you can't take these sports on just seasonally, part-time. You have to work at them all year long, and Christian has worked hard at this. Christian ended up winning, well, not winning, but being the only 3A qualifier in the Western Regional. And I might mention, Luke Grogan was the only 2A Regional qualifier, both from Haywood County, and that's a pretty big region to actually qualify for the state on individuals. Christian ended up playing at the state and he finished eleventh out of eighty-four players. Thirteenth? Thirteen, okay. And I think, I will, I want to say, Christian has played a lot of junior golf. He's played a lot of tournaments, and he said that winning the conference championship, the conference tournament Player of the Year means more to him than any other tournament he's ever played in. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Morris, you didn't coach any of these people, but you, you know at least one of them. Would you like to come down and?
Well, at this time, I'll let the chair continue, so I'd like to make a comment though before Coach comes in here. Coach Robinson, this group of girls is just an exception. Again, I'm going to, one of these is my daughter. But I've watched these girls from the time they were here at Clyde playing basketball. And Ms. Christopher took this little group of girls and went undefeated. And this little group of girls have just, they came young ladies and it's the most amazing, amazing thing I've ever saw. The only thing I ask these girls is, come back to Haywood County. If you're going off to college, come back. Come back, make our county great. They've got the abilities to do that. Now, Coach Robinson, four years ago, I was a parent sitting on the track, on the sideline on the track team with just a handful of kids. You took a couple of kids to state. Bottom of the pile, but just as happy as you could be. For four years, you grew the track team. You grew them into Regionals, Conference Champs. I want to say one thing, you are a prime example of good to great. And I want to thank you as a parent, first of all, for what you did for these girls. And as a school board member, I want to say thank you for doing that. Also, I want to brag on, he's an English teacher. Okay? So, he never corrected me English too much while I was out there, but he kept his calm. But I want to thank you and thank your wife for the many hours that you gave up and your family. So, again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you to the board for recognizing us tonight. Had a phenomenal season. First conference champ outright for the girls' team in school history, the first Regional Championship for the girls' team in school history, took our largest number at the state. My job is very easy when you work with young people like this. I've been very blessed and I've enjoyed it, and I thank for all the support and for the recognition. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte and obviously the school board for not only believing in me for my first year teaching at Pisgah High School and also coaching the men's tennis. And I just found out I'll have men's and women's starting next year, so I get the thing they add more and more to you every year, right? Which is a good thing, job security. So...
She was not coerced.
Yeah, it wasn't coerced, it's just a passion. I grew up playing. I was fortunate enough to play on this tennis scholarship. But the best thing about the job is, is being able to stand up here in front of you today and recognize a young man at Pisgah High School named Hunter White. And I guess what's so exciting about this, being my first year as a coach, I'm standing here in front of you today, presenting you to this young man, Hunter White, who's not only this year's 2A State Champ, Conference Champion for Pisgah High School in Haywood County, but this is his second year in a row, which is pretty incredible for a young man. And not only is Hunter an outstanding student, you know, a player as, you know, on the court for tennis, he also plays football and basketball as well. So, he plays all three sports. And not only that, he's an outstanding student in the classroom with over a 4.0 average, and he's also was just a junior marshal for our graduating class this year. So, not only he's outstanding on the court as well as other sports and in the classroom, and that's what's so, you know, very important to us as education as well. So, on behalf of Pisgah High School and the men's tennis team, Hunter, congratulations.
I wish someone would, would have been able to say that about me in high school. They would have been lying, though. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Coach Ricky Brindley, Pisgah High School Golf.
Hey, thank you for having me. I'm here to introduce the, the men's golf team from Pisgah High School. We had some special performers this year. Two of them actually made All-Conference, which was, which was quite a feat for them, and they happened to be twins. And if you can tell them apart, then you're better than I am, because I still can't. Luke and Levi Grogan are their names. Both of them were All-Conference. Luke ended up going on to the state tournament. He finished third in the Regional Tournament, went on to the state tournament, shot a seventy-five, is that correct? Seventy-six on the first day and an eighty on the second day. So, they, the second day, he slipped. The good news is, they're both juniors, so they're both coming back, and I think we've got a chance to compete for an individual state title, either one of them. So, I'm here to honor both of them tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to be here, and we thank you for the support you've shown us as a golf team at Pisgah. Thank you.
Track Coach.
Good evening. Thank y'all for recognizing our student athletes. Our track team this year, our girls, had three All-Conference finishes when it comes to the overall events, our girls' four-by-eight. And then, one of our individual events was the girls' 400-meter dash. And then, we had a long jumper, which, the first time in my tenure there, six years, that I, we've actually had a long jumper win a conference championship. So, it was kind of a, a big deal for us. The great thing about this is, almost every single one of them comes back next year, so that should be even more, you know, makes me very happy, I'll just put it that way. So, I'll go ahead and recognize ours who showed up today. First one here is Mackenzie Murphy. Mackenzie Murphy was on our girls' four-by-eight team that finished first in conference. They finished second in Regionals, and they finished third in the state. So, it was a pretty big deal. Along with her is Sierra Sutherland. Sierra finished as well with that four-by-eight team, first in conference, second Regional, third in state. But she also placed first in the 400-meter dash as well, and was a conference champion in an individual event, too. So, I'd like to recognize them right now as our conference champions.
And last, but certainly not least, Serena Goodwin, longtime coach for softball at Pisgah High School.
Long time implies old, I'm afraid, but that's okay. We took a vote and we decided we were at camp and we would come just as we are, so we felt like you saved best dress for last today, and we appreciate that. This team has been phenomenal. It's something that, as we went into the season, we really didn't expect. And when you look at those before you, we have one senior and we have four sophomores and a junior. So, we feel like there's a lot of great things to look forward to. We're excited about what we've done and where we're going. We're excited for Mahala. Mahala's going to be going to Gardner-Webb and playing softball and pursuing a career there. So, there's not, you know, no words can express. The team that did beat us in the state playoffs actually won state championships, so we felt like we made a good showing. They have gone far beyond what most people felt like they could do, and I think that they are to be commended. Winning a conference championship in this 2A, 3A conference has been difficult. You know, we can win a state championship and we couldn't win a conference championship. So, we had to overcome a lot of obstacles and spend many, many hours in some really crummy weather down at the softball field. But I'd like to thank the board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, just everyone for their support, the fans. I think we had over 500 people at one of our later home games, and the support is phenomenal, and it says a lot when you get to play at home. And we kept saying, "We don't lose at home, we don't lose at home." And I think just to know that our community backs us as much as you do, and people come from all over to support us, and other schools, Tuscola fans, it's, it's amazing and we appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to just acknowledge the ones who are here. Callie Kirkendall, she was our pitcher. She also made All-Conference this year. She faced a lot of pressure. We, we put her under fire and she stood well. Shelby Tomasi, she was our third baseman. She had a grand slam in the last game of play. She also made All-Conference. Mahala Irvin, our catcher for four years, going to Gardner-Webb. She also made All-Conference. Nadia Hudson, who became our home run champion through the playoffs. I can't remember how many she hit, but she had a walk-off and several others along the way to keep us playing consistently. Three home runs? Yeah, three home runs, I've been told. Sheridan Presley also made All-Conference, second baseman. She had a couple of home runs herself this year. Ashley Penland, left field. She had a couple of home runs, too, and she is honorable mention, All-Conference. Walt couldn't be here tonight, but I, you know, it couldn't be done without all the hard work he does on the field. He's down there, just about any time of day you drive by, you'll see him dragging or raking or mowing or something. And also, we were fortunate enough to have Coach Morgan come back to us from Brevard, and she joined us this year. We appreciate her helping us out and hope she'll stick around a while. And Coach Ham, couldn't do it without her. She brings a lot to us, a lot of humor, a lot of good times, and fantastic coaching ability. Thank you all very much.
you tonight 22 of our teachers who have chosen to expand their knowledge and better their education and complete their master's degree program. They had very short notice, so I don't know how many we have here. I think we have a pretty good number, and remember, school's out, so I really appreciate them coming back. In alphabetical order, we have Jonathan Allen from Pisgah High School, Master of Arts Degree in Mathematics Education from Western Carolina, and I just had an email from him. He said he had three kids he had to keep, so... Wanda Brubager from Riverbend. Wanda here. Master of Arts in Elementary Education from Gardner-Webb. Elena Bryant from Canton Middle School, Master of Arts Degree in Middle Grades Education from Gardner-Webb. Daphne Buchanan from Central Elementary. Master of Arts in Executive Leadership from Gardner-Webb. These are our future administrators. Brittany Bumgarner from Canton Middle School, Master of Arts Degree in Mathematics Education from University of Texas at Arlington. Molly Carver, did I see Molly? From Metta Brook, Master of Arts Degree in Executive Leadership from Gardner-Webb. Martha Early. Martha here. From Canton Middle School, Master of Arts Degree in Middle Grades Education from Gardner-Webb. Yvonne Francis from Tuscola High School, Master of Arts Degree in Ed Leadership from Gardner-Webb. Master of Arts, it just dawned on me, Master of Arts in Elementary Education from Gardner-Webb. Travis Hannah from Pisgah High School. Master of Arts Degree in School Administration from Western Carolina. Will Hicks from North Canton Elementary. That's not here tonight. Anna King from Hazelwood. I don't think Anna's here, I heard from her. From Clyde Elementary, Master of Arts in Elementary Education from Gardner-Webb. Jessica Long from Clyde Elementary. Master of Arts in Elementary Education from Gardner-Webb. Darlene Lowe. Darlene's not here tonight. Jennifer Reeves, Bethel Middle School. Master of Arts in Ed Leadership. Kim Shipman from Riverbend. Master of Arts in Education Leadership from Gardner-Webb. Belinda Trantham from Geno Luska. Master of Arts in Executive Education from Gardner-Webb. And this is an add-on, this is her second masters, because she already had one. Ally Vernon. From Bethel Elementary School, she had a master's in elementary ed. Jan West from Clyde, Masters of Art in Executive Leadership from Gardner-Webb. Ginny Wood from the Central Office, Master of Arts in Executive Leadership from Gardner-Webb. And that's also an add-on for Ginny, she already had a master's. And Jean Anne Yates from Metta Brook, Master of Arts in Ed Leadership. Congratulations to y'all. We want to get a picture. Oh, but our photographer's one of the, okay, good. And thank you for all your hard work. I know what you've been through, and I know how glad you are it's over, and congratulations.
Congratulations to all the award winners and also to all the folks who were recognized for getting their master's degree. What a great accomplishment. Ms. Moody, has anyone signed up to address the board in open session? Okay, thank you very much. Board recognizes Ms. Joan Ferrara.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, staff and guests. Every year, the federal government monitors the exceptional children's program on 15 different indicators. And tonight, I want to hit the highlights of the, of how our program did on the 15 indicators. I want you to bear in mind while I'm talking that we're talking about the 1112 school year, not the school year that just finished. It took them until May to get us the data for the 1112 school year. And also, while we're talking, Natalie's going to pass you out a stakeholder questionnaire. And as I'm going through the presentation, if you would kind of like take some notes, I need to, some feedback from you guys. You can really help me with the Continuous Improvement Performance Plan that's due to the state, the end of June, with things that you think are going well with our program, things that we can improve on. And our big emphasis is inclusion and parental involvement, so as I talk, if you'll think about that, that will truly help me, your feedback. And the focus of monitoring, it used to be they'd come and monitor our records and make sure we dotted all our i's and crossed our t's, and it was all about document completion. But finally, the emphasis is on student outcomes, and that's something we can all be passionate about, trying to go from good to great. The first indicator is our graduation rate, and as you can see, when we started this, we were at 46.8% of our kids with IEPs graduating in four years with their class that they started ninth grade with. And we gradually came up, and last year, I went, year before last, 10-11, we had 82.8% of our kids with disabilities graduate in four years. Unfortunately, for 1112, we came down. And when we got the results, we were all very disheartened, but as you'll find later in the presentation, there is some good news that goes along with that. The important thing to compare apples to apples, and why isn't this moving? I wanted to compare how we did in Haywood County with the state, and as you can see, when we started in '06, '07, we were behind the state average for kids. when we started in '06-'07, we were behind the state average for kids with disabilities, but gradually, we've gotten above the state average, and we continue to be above the state average. This is the good news. When we really dug down into our data to find out why did we have this dip in 11-12, what we found is, high school has raised the rigor of the courses, and so a lot of our kids needed more support, and we started adding curriculum assistance classes. The kids graduated, but it took them a semester or a year longer to graduate. So the good news is 89.7% of our kids with disabilities do graduate, but they don't graduate within four years, it takes them a little bit longer. The important thing to me is they leave high school with a diploma, and they have opportunities, so I wanted you to be aware of that. What are we doing to improve the graduation rate? As you know, that's been a county-wide effort for several years now, and we looked at it, we looked at from the time we get kids, and we get kids with disabilities when they turn three, all the way to when they graduate. So we really started putting an emphasis on three-year-olds, you know, making sure they were identified early, they got the help they needed, so when they got to kindergarten, they wouldn't be so far behind, and their school experience would be better. The Exceptional Children's Program hired a graduation coach that's located at the Alternative Learning Center to help kids who have dropped out or about to drop out either stay in school or go to the Alternative Learning Center and finish their education. We tried to reduce the teacher-student ratio at Pisgah so that they could provide more individualized attention. We continued with Alternative High School, and we added four pre-K kindergartens a few years ago, we've maintained that. Dropout rate is inverse of graduation rate. As you can see, when we started in '05-'06, our dropout rate was astronomical for kids with disabilities. This isn't for all kids, but for kids with disabilities. We were 14.46, the state mandated us to get it down to 9.73, and we got it down to like 2.5% at one point, and it crept back up to 6.2 for the 11-12 school year. And when we looked at the data to try to figure out what happened, you know, one of the things that happened is that kids moved out of state and didn't start school till the second semester, and that's something we don't have a lot of control about. We've gone from having 36 dropouts to, our lowest was 12, and then we've been 13, 14, 16 the last three, four years. No excuses for it, we realize it's an issue, we want to get it to zero, and we're trying really hard to do that. And again, I've talked to you about what we did for graduation, and what we do for graduation also helps with dropouts. Indicator three is assessments, and in those of you that worked in the schools, you know that kids are not, they don't have IEPs unless they're behind, unless it's a speech IEP. We have kids that are on grade level that had articulation errors, so our kids with disabilities, the state requires that 95% of them take the end-of-grade, end-of-course tests, and we had 99.525% take the test. You can see in some counties, they send the kids, aren't going to do well home, but we track down every kid and try to get them tested, so we're really good about that. And of course, our kids didn't meet proficiency standards or annual measurable objectives because they are below grade level, they wouldn't be in special ed. The things we're doing to try to help them, we have an instructional coach that we've had since 2009-10, and she helps our new teachers, our teachers that have challenging students, you know, really look at what kind of learning is taking place, and what they can do to tweak the instruction to help kids fill in some of those skill gaps. We're part of the North Carolina School State Improvement Project, we were one of the first centers, we've been doing this 12 years, we were 11 years as a best practice center, and then this last year, they decided not to fund best practice centers, so we're still in the school improvement project, but nobody's a best practice center anymore. We do lots of training on reading, we have a reading foundations train, it's like a graduate-level course in reading. Our regular ed teachers and our special ed teachers take that class. We collect a lot of data that we send to the state for student progress. We also have math foundations, we have one of, our county has some of the, more math trainers than some of our larger counties in the state, and we really work hand-in-hand with regular education to make sure we're on the same page, the way we instruct kids in math for what regular education is doing, we've had a lot of support from the supervisors Suspension expulsion, the state monitors to make sure that kids with IEPs are not suspended or expelled at a rate that's higher than other kids, and we have not had a problem with that, we've met the criteria for suspension expulsion. And one of the things we've done with suspensions, expulsions, is to really go in and be proactive, to figure out why are the kids acting out, that they're doing things that will get them put out of school, and safety issues, we have a behavior consultant. The year this data was reported, we had two autism consultants. We do nonviolent crisis intervention training with administrators, regular ed teachers, special ed teachers, teacher assistants, so that they can go in and figure out how to deescalate the crisis and do something positive before it gets to an out-of-school suspension. You know, we've worked really, really hard with our mental health providers to have day treatment programs where kids get intensive mental health services in school, and a lot of them get intensive in-home services too, to deal with some of the issues that they bring to school. Love and logic training for a wide variety of staff, we've done responsiveness instruction so that kids get what they need quickly, and they're not frustrated in school and acting out. And we do a lot of online stuff for kids when they have to be out so they don't get behind. I wanted to brag on our Bridges Program, this is our elementary day treatment program, full day at Central Elementary. We get visited by the state every year, and they're just always very impressed with this program. We have kids, they come in, they stay six months to a year, they go back to their home school, and they're successful when they go back. We've had one student in all these years that repeated this program, and it's because he had a sudden death in his family, and he needed a smaller, more supportive environment. The fifth indicator that the state monitors on is to make sure that we are not pulling kids out and denying them access to high-quality general ed teachers, that they're not in, they want us to educate all children in the least restrictive environment. And the state has set some goals for the regular setting, which means the child is spending 80% of more of their time in the general education classroom. The state wants us to have 65.69% or higher, and we're at 71.3. For a separate setting, which means the child is spending 60% or more of their day with kids with disabilities, the state set the standard at 15.3, and we only have 10% of our kids that are in separate settings. And then home, hospital, and public separate schools, the state said you can have 2%, and we have less than half a percent in those settings, which is a testament to the fact that general ed and special ed have really accepted ownership of these kids, they're all our kids, and the general ed teachers now will fight us to keep them in their classrooms, they take responsibility for the kid's success, and that's something that doesn't happen in all LEAs. I'm very proud about that. The thing that we've worked really hard on is inclusion training with general ed, we've been doing that for years, and making sure that our special ed teachers can come in and work with the kids in their general ed classroom, know what the curriculum is, know what the expectations are, and support that general ed teacher in educating that child. Preschool children, we don't have any separate classes for preschoolers with disabilities, they're all involved in preschool programs with kids of a wide variety of abilities, and we're very proud of that. And I think that's the way the world needs to be, we need to reduce the barriers. And like I said, we've worked really hard to identify kids early so they can get the services they need. Preschool outcomes, we had, we had 117 kids that were in the preschool program, but only 54 were old enough to go on to kindergarten, so that's the reason those numbers are smaller. But 53 of the 54 kids who had been in the program at least six months who went on to kindergarten, they do this thing called COSAF that measures their outcomes, and 53 of 54 demonstrated progress or improvement, which we're proud of. And those are some of the activities, y'all have had a chance to look at this in detail before tonight's meeting. Indicator eight is parental involvement, and that has probably been our biggest push for the last two or three years. We want parents to know that they're the chairman of the board, they're child's education, and we want to partner with them, and we've worked really hard for parents to know how much we value and appreciate their input, and that's something I really could use help from you, some other things we can do. But the next 10 slides are just different things we've done as an agency to support parents and help them know that we do value their input and need their input. Some of the things I'll point out, we have a teacher for the blind students and low-vision students, and he started a parent support group, and he's brought in kids that are older that have been successful in school, and they've explained the technology they've used to access it. He, you know, had a person come in and do like blindside at the middle school for, so that kids on a sixth-grade team with a blind student could understand what it was like to, you know, operate with not being able to use your vision to learn. And the mother said that was the happiest day of her life, to see other kids really understanding what her son faced every day when he woke up. Our teacher for the hearing impaired is also working really hard to support parents and help them access resources. I am not good with this. Preschool has really done a lot of things this year. They did a five-week session called Adventures in Reading where they had, they hosted it, and parents came and they talked about how to read to kids and increase their vocabulary and their language development. We did a kindergarten transition night where we had parents of kids with disabilities come, and we just kind of explained the whole school process and how things would be different at school, and gave them packets to help them develop skills over the summer, and just tried to relieve some of their anxieties they have about going to school. We transitioned 50, over 50 kids this year, where we sat down at their school that they're going to kindergarten with, with the principal, the lead teacher, the new speech therapist or the new exceptional children's teacher, and the parents were there to talk about, this is my child, this is what's successful with them, this is what I need you to do, so that the parent left knowing who is going to be working with their child the next year. And then our preschool speech-language pathologist send home packets on a frequent basis. One of the things I wanted to mention to you, trying to get the community to really support our program, one of the young men that you recognize tonight, the tennis champion, Hunter Wyke, he's president of the Diversity Club at Pisgah, they did mention that with all his accolades, but the Diversity Club adopted the preschool, some of the preschool kids that had some financial needs, and they bought gifts and hosted a Christmas party for them, and invited the parents, so that's another way we're trying to partner with parents. Elementary, middle, high school, everybody has worked really, really hard to support parents. Speech-language pathologists, and again, I really need some input from you about things we can do, because we're reaching a lot of parents, but sometimes the parents you need to reach are the ones that you're not, so any help we can get with that would be most appreciated. Disproportionality is looking at ethnic background. The state makes sure that we don't identify minorities as being learning disabled, or intellectually disabled, or serious emotionally disabled because of their culture, and not because of the criteria the state requires, and we have not had an issue with that. And again, it's in those two categories, intellectual disability and serious emotional disability, that they want to make sure that kids are not misidentified. Indicator 11 is a 90-day timeline. When a child is referred to special ed, we have 90 days from the receipt of that referral to complete the process. The goal is 100%, we've been at 100% for the last five years. Same thing with indicator 12, which is when kids have disabilities, when they're infants, they are served by the CDSA, Children's Developmental Services Agency, but then by their third birthday, the public school system picks up the responsibility with those services, and we're charged to make sure that those kids, there's no gap in services, that they have a plan in place by the time they reach age three, and we've been 100% at that. Indicator 13 is post-secondary goals. In high school, we've worked really hard with our kids to make sure that they understand why they're in high school and how that's going to help them achieve, you know, whatever goal they have, you know, what their life's dream is, and we have post-secondary goals that the students help us develop, and then we come up with activities that we can do at high school to help them achieve those post-secondary goals. And we invite outside agencies like Haywood Vocational Services or Lifespan, or Vocational Rehabilitation, just to make sure that children with disabilities when they graduate, they have the resources they need to go on and work, or to, you know, go to college, or to a trade school, or whatever post-secondary training that they're going to have, and we've been 100% in that area. Indicator 14 is post-school outcomes, and this is probably the most depressing thing, and I can tell you that I cried when I saw this data, and we're hard at work at it already. We got, our kids that graduated in June 2011 were surveyed in July of 2012, and they were asked, were they working full-time, were they in higher education, were they in any kind of training program, or they supported employment? And five, six years ago, we had to survey, 84% of our kids were working or in school, and this time, we got 65%. It was down across the state because of the recession, but that's no excuse. When I drilled down deep into the data, there were three things I noted. One was, girls that are home with their babies are counted as unengaged, and we had three little girls in that class that we're very proud of, that they're staying home, taking care of their kids and raising them, but they count as unengaged. The other thing was, because of the recession, the state had allowed our kids in the occupational courses study to use volunteer hours instead of paid employment, and they got their diploma, but it's hard to compete in this market when you don't have paid employment on your resume. So we decided when we got this data, and we got this data late March, early April, that we were going to require them to have paid employment. We weren't going to allow volunteer hours after this because we're not doing them a service, and we want to make sure they can be employed. And the third thing was, we had a very poor response rate, only 29% of the kids that they tried to survey actually responded to the survey. The people that did the survey were from Stony Brook, New York, and I wonder if that had something to do with our kids returning the phone calls or understanding some of the questions, so we're going to start doing our own surveys and follow-up on our kids because I think the results are better than this, but we're hard at work at that. We've worked really hard with VR, we shared this data with them, and they are working hard to get kids jobs. She went out and placed like three jobs after she saw our data that week, and Holly Brigman is our new VR counselor, she's very motivated to work, partner with our kids that have disabilities. Our job coaches are working hard, they're taking the kids on college tours and job fairs. We're trying to evaluate every one of our, either in their junior or senior year, to make sure when they leave high school, if they need accommodations or they need services, that they have a current psychoeducational evaluation that will be the ticket to getting those services. And then the last indicator is general supervision, that's my job to make sure that we're complying with all the state rules, and we're filling out the paperwork appropriately and following all the guidelines, and we've been at 100% in that, and if we have an error, we get it corrected within a year. So the last thing I need from you guys is some stakeholder feedback, and I know y'all have got a lot of things on your agenda, but if you don't get it finished tonight, if you could just send it to Central Office to my attention, I would sincerely appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for me about the results? Any comments?
I have a comment, Joan. I think this is a wonderful program, I think you've done a wonderful job with it, I like the data. Yeah, that's, it's just, how can we always reach those children, those particular children with those needs?
Thank you.
The success afterward is something that, that's enlightening, that's eye-opening there.
Thank you.
Do you in Haywood County at one time have a transitional coordinator?
We did.
And, but we don't anymore?
We've used more job coaches at the high school, and then partnered with VR. With the resources being what they are, we've just tried to look and see, you know, how can we use that funding, and we've used resources in the community, and VR's been a big help. And HVO has also helped with our students who can't get paid employment, they do a program to help eliminate the barriers that would prevent them from getting employment, and they work with our-
To me, that's the hugest-
Right.
The largest indicator is that number 14.
Right.
What they're doing after they get out of school.
Right, right. And we have been sailing along, doing really well with that, and I'm very disappointed too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Board members, we have homework, so be sure and get this filled out, and back to Ms. Ferrara up at the Central Office. The board will now recognize Ms. Jan Nesbit.
Members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, tonight I'm going to be presenting the Haywood County AIG Plan, which is actually the second phase of the plan that's required by the state. The first was written in 2010, and it actually expires, I guess it will be the middle of July, because that's really when this new plan is due. So I came, I'm coming to you tonight for approval. I sent you a copy, and this actually is Article 9B, which mandates identification services for gifted for all students K-12. It has a three-year plan, so with the plan that is currently before you, it will go through 2016. The state definition for AIG students says that academically or intellectually gifted students perform or show the potential to perform at substantially high levels of accomplishment when compared with others of their age, experiences, or environments. Academically or intellectually gifted students exhibit high performance capability in intellectual areas, specific academic fields, or in both the intellectual areas and- areas, specific academic fields, or in both the intellectual areas and specific academic fields. Academically or intellectually gifted students require differentiated education services beyond those ordinarily provided by the regular education program. Outstanding abilities are present in students from all cultural groups across all economic strata and in all areas of human endeavor. The chart that you see before you right now is the data that was submitted every April. By April the 30th, we have to do a child AIG headcount. This comes from April of 2010, and I'll explain a little bit to you about this, but you see that we had a total population of AIG students for K-12 Haywood County Schools, 826. When you see the part that says, it actually says exceptionality, let's see, it's called duly gifted, that's your students who are AIG, but they also may have a learning disability. And we actually have quite a few of those in our system right now. So just remember, 826. In 2011, that number rose 25. We had 851 identified students with, I think there was maybe 10 or 11 of those that were duly certified as AIG and EC. 2012, that number rose substantially. It went to 1,018. So that was quite a large difference you see there of 192. Revisions to our plan that we have actually just now put into our plan that will be for your approval is this year, we were required by the state of North Carolina, the DPI, to identify students in two categories. They're intellectually gifted or academically gifted. So we had to come up with what we think our definition for intellectually gifted is, and we decided that that would be students who score a 96% or greater on an approved aptitude test to recognize them as intellectually gifted. That places these students at the bottom of the ninth stain line, which also tells us that those are very high scores on all three batteries when you take an aptitude test. Now for academically gifted reading and/or math, because you have to recognize that students can be academically reading, they could be academically gifted in math, or they can be both. And we have decided that students, and we typically, when they get to high school, they normally are not nominated anymore for the AIG program because at that point, they can enroll in your honors classes or your AP classes regardless of whether they're identified as AIG or not. But the K-8 students, we decided they have to meet three of the four criteria, and one must be a quantitative score, so they can have either a 92 percentile or higher on an aptitude in either verbal or quantitative subtest for identification, or they can have a 92 percentile on the verbal and quantitative test taken the Woodcock-Johnson Achievement Test. We also will be using the gifted rating scales, which is a norm-referenced guide to help us in identifying characteristics in those students, and in just a moment, we'll talk about those, and also grades of A or B for our area of identification or EOG score of level four or 90th percentile. We can't really say what that's going to be yet because we don't really know what our outcome's going to look like in October when we get the EOG scores back. Students who've been nominated for AIG, now what? Well, a classroom teacher will complete a student profile sheet that will provide information regarding the students, such as their grades, assessment scores, whether it's case 21, K-2 assessment, their guided reading level, their strengths and their weaknesses. And once parental permission has been obtained for us to test those students, we will give them the COGAA aptitude assessment to obtain reasoning and probability skills for that student. Once that's done, we also have the teacher in the meantime filling out the gifted rating scales, and you see there that six domains on that GRS is intellectual, academic, motivation, creativity, leadership, and artistic talent. Then we will give them the Woodcock-Johnson Test of Achievement. So that means that just because they may not score high enough on the aptitude test, they have a chance by taking the achievement test to be recognized as academically gifted reading or academically gifted math. And once again, upon completion, we put all the data together, and then we will have an AIG Leadership Committee at the school that will determine whether that student actually has met the criteria established to be placed as AIG or IG. Highlights from the 2010-2013 plan. We had, as you could tell, an increase in the number of identified gifted students. In technology, using the money that we received from the state, we were able to purchase laptops, five for each elementary school's AIG teacher. So that was a total of 45 total for the elementary. Right now, we currently have ordered laptops for the middle school. We have 15 for Waynesville Middle, 10 for Canton Middle, and five from Bethel Middle, and that's always prorated according to the attendance at the school. We have a lot of students who have been accepted to the North Carolina Governor's School. This year, we had probably, since I've been in this position, the largest amount of applications for students that we've ever had, and that was around 26 students who applied to Governor's School. So we had to funnel it down. And the number of applicants that you can send is based actually on your 10th and 11th grade enrollment of students, and this year, we were only able to submit five for academic performance, but we had, we could do unlimited in other areas such as foreign language, music, dance, that type of thing. And we actually had four this year who were selected to attend. We have, we're very proud of the participation in the various competitions that our kindergarten through eighth grade, as well as our high school actually does. And one of the things that happens at the high school level is they often will call and ask me if I could pay for the bus mileage or for the bus driver to go, and so that's one way I can help the high school out for these programs. And then we also receive quite a bit of support from Dr. Doris Hammett, who actually spoke to you back in September. She's been a huge benefactor, and that actually comes on standard five and standard six in our plan, and then our K-2 nurturing program. This was a letter that was taken from a little girl who attended Governor's School last summer, and the part that I love about this, and I'll let you read most of it to yourself, but she talked about the fact that when she went for the audition for dance, that she really didn't like the type of dance that they wanted her to do because it wasn't just really her style. And she says, "When I was very young, I loved to dance, but I wasn't naturally flexible and I didn't have exceptional balance, so everything didn't come easily. Through the years, I've become increasingly involved in my local studio and improved my dance technique. I'm not sure when it happened, but eventually my love for dance eroded until it was almost completely gone. I still enjoy dancing, but I view dancing as solely a discipline. Dance was work and that's all. At Governor's School, we were invited to explore the way our bodies naturally wanted to move, then challenge that. It wasn't about how many turns you could do or how low your split was, but rather about if you could feel yourself moving to uncharted territory in terms of dancing. I can't say that I was wrong about this style of dance, being different from what I was capable or comfortable with, but it was definitely worth exploring." And then she goes ahead to say that this seems like a very vague description to the fabulous time that I had at Governor's School, but I'm afraid that the adventure that I was able to experience was too amazing for me to even put into words. I want to personally thank you, and she was sending this to Dr. Hammett actually, to tell her, "Thank you," because Dr. Hammett actually gives $2,000 so we could pay the tuition for four students to attend Governor's School. And if we were to get six or eight selected, I take that out of my AIG budget. But she actually sparked this student's interest again, and this child's mom is actually a teacher in our school system, and she wanted us to know, she told me what a difference it had made in her daughter's life. This is a graph showing the K-2 nurturing, and our last plan, for those of you who are around, we decided, and in the past, the way the money was given, we don't really ever get an increase, as you know, but at one time we did, and so years and years ago, when Carol was an AIG specialist and also then the coordinator, they pretty much only worked with fourth and fifth graders to recognize gifted, but you know, it doesn't start then. It starts much earlier than that. And so when Joan was actually just giving her presentation, we have a preschool student right now that has an IQ of over 140. So it starts very, very young. It's just always not recognized. So I wanted you to see this graph. So if you could see there, you'll see though that the blue mark was from 2010, and we're showing the kindergarten, first and second grade, and the orange is from 2013. And this is recognizing the number of students that have actually been identified AIG. And I can't see that well. But I think that for kindergarten, there was, this year we have 37, and this was as May 31st. We have 55 first grade and 55 second. So you can see that the nurturing and what our specialists are doing is they have lesson plans that they designed, they go into the kindergarten, first and second grade classrooms and present it. The problem has been that our teachers often don't understand and recognize because they have their hands full the gifted characteristics that children exhibit. And a lot of people think they're just the perfect little kids who make all straight A's, sit at their desk and do their work, and they're not. And so now then, that we have opened many eyes to what gifted characteristics are, we're seeing more and more students in the K-2 range being nominated for testing into the AIG program. And so we're very proud of what this has brought about because each of our schools now have a big collection of these K-2 students that are recognized as AIG. Our new plan, the highlight, is the IG identification as well as the AR, academic reading, academic math, or if they qualify all three, then it is a true AIG identification. Our specialists are working on grade-specific curriculum units that integrate core subjects with technology, and they're using the Common Core Curriculum to develop those. And then Standard 3D of the state standards says that students who are AIG in general, they are placed in general education classrooms with teachers must have, those teachers must have either an AIG add-on license, or they have to meet the LEA's professional development requirements. So that's our plan for this next year, is that we will be coming up with a local certificate where those teachers will be taking so that they, we can say that they truly have been exposed to what gifted education is all about. Any questions?
A lot of good work.
Thank you.
Your plan, Ms. Nesbit, and a roster of the membership meetings and agendas for you to have your meeting, where is that? Is that located on our website? Can it be placed upon the website?
Where we have our AIG specialist meetings?
Yeah, I mean, because it says that you're established Haywood County Schools Advisory Board consisting of-
We have AIG Advisory Board, yes, we can place it on there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I was asking for a roster of the membership, and I just, I mean, it's self-explanatory where it's at, but I'd just like to see it.
Sure.
Just to see.
Absolutely.
I believe my wife served on it at one time.
She did.
Yes. So thank you very much.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Well, we need to have a motion at this time to approve the plan as presented. Mr. Kravatz made the motion. I hear a second to the motion. Second, Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Nesbit, for the presentation and for the hard work that you do in the AIG program. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the regular May 13th and May 20th closed and called minutes, and also the regular session and closed session minutes from both May 13th and May 20th. We did note one change that will be made in the closed session minutes. There will be an item struck, just at the advice of our attorney, and just to make that note, that will be corrected in our closed session minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with-
As the corrected, okay.
As the corrected.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The board will now recognize Mr. Fred Trantham. Fred has agreed, I don't know if you know this, Dr. Garrett, Fred has agreed to stay until we get all the policies updated, and we don't plan on voting on any policies for the next three years, so we're just going to keep, we're just going to keep tabling me and all the policies, so we'll never get them approved, so he's just going to have to keep working on them. Yeah, absolutely, you know, it's just, I'm sorry, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, staff and guests, I come before you tonight to ask approval for the 2013-14 Title I application. This is a program that provides supplemental education to our elementary students in K-5, and it has since the late 1960s. So it is a federal-funded program, and it's an opportunity for our teachers, teacher assistants, and tutors to provide additional instruction to our students in our K-5 schools. We were scheduled to take a 5% cut this year in the federal Title I program, but through additional funds, we only took a 2% cut, so that was only $34,000 instead of the $90,000 we were expecting to receive. So that was better news than what we expected. Again, the majority of the funds go to our elementary schools. The overall amount was a little over $1,800,000, and $1,400,000 are divided up among the nine elementary schools based on free and reduced lunch count. And that amount comes out to $667 per student, and the schools then take these funds and make the decision of how many teachers, teacher assistants, or tutors that will be employed to provide the instruction for the students that need the extra help in reading and in math. So I ask for your approval that we submit this application.
Mr. Kravatz made a motion that we approve the Title I application. Is that correct, pronunciation?
That is correct.
We have a second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham. We'll get you back up here in just a minute. Board members, next on our agenda is a discussion about our reappointment or an appointment to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. I'm passing out to you a letter I have received in request. We reappoint our current appointee, Mr. Bill Barker. If you recall, Mr. Barker was appointed to a real short term because it was an unexpired term of one of the former Board of Trustees, I believe that's correct, Mr. Mars. Mr. Mars is the current chair, until tonight, but anyway, Chair of the Haywood Community College, and so he will more than likely recuse himself of this discussion and vote tonight if we do decide to go ahead and reappoint Mr. Barker. We have a couple options that we can do, board members. We can go ahead and honor this request for Mr. Barker to be reappointed for a full four-year term, or we can open it back up for discussion and interview any other applicants. I'm just open for suggestions of what you'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Barker did just to serve a short term, I'm sure he would like to get the fulfillment of being on this trustees' board of another four years, and I really feel like Mr. Barker was doing a good job as a trustee in appointment to help the community college and especially through the transition into a new presidency. This time, I would like to bring Mr. Barker's name as a nomination to fulfill a four-year term as trustee of the Haywood Community College.
I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harbin. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
When did we appoint him?
Trying to remember exactly.
I can't remember. I know we appointed him, I just can't- Last June.
Just about a year.
So a year and a half.
No, about a year.
Last June, no, I'm sorry. So not even a year.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Barker's done an excellent job on the board as well. My only question is, has anyone else shown interest in-
Not to my knowledge, but now we have not advertised it. I just, I'm just being, I had a request. We can, we can table it, we can approve it, we can re-advertize it, but I felt like that when someone's in this transitionary period, I think we need to think about this and deliberate on this very carefully if we do decide to change or reopen it back. change or reopen it back up.
So when does his, Mr. Barker's term expire?
June the 30th. But there's no reason why we'd have to appoint him tonight. We can do it next meeting, and there'll be a, he'll stay on there until we appoint someone else, is my understanding. Or reappoint him.
I mean, this letter just come to you, the reappointment, right?
We have, do we have a motion?
Yeah, you have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
Okay, good.
I can tell you from our past appointees that have been non-existent at times, Mr. Barker's very involved and very passionate about that, that school being successful in helping, helping the kids in our community. I think he has the right focus and the right demeanor to continue, and that's why I would second that motion to reappoint him.
Any other discussion?
Well, I mean, I have no doubt that he's did his job, I'm just don't have a, I'm sore disappointed if his, I can't keep up with every appointment that we've made, but this letter, right here is March 26th, 2013. Today's the first. We got our board package on Friday.
Right.
I'm just disappointed, the last two years, we've opened it up for interviews.
Right, and we can't.
And I understand that this is, this is something that Bill only did it for a year. I just want to state my displeasure that...
I didn't get you the letter.
We hadn't, no, we hadn't talked about this before now about the point, like I said, I can't remember...
Well, it has to be an open session.
Well, no, no, but I mean, I'm just saying that we haven't talked about this, because like I said, I can't remember when we appoint boards. I mean, I can't keep up with that. So, but I mean, you've got a, you've got a motion and a second, so.
And we got one person that's gonna recuse themselves from the vote for the record. Any other question or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven and one abstention, or recuse from voting, Mr. Mars. Thank you. Dr. Garrett, would you please inform Mr. Barker about his reappointment to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees for a four-year term starting July 1st? I'm sure Ms. Barker can let him know, too.
I'm just trying to save 44 cents.
Forty-six.
Exactly, forty-six, okay.
Now we'll talk to Mr. Pat Smathers about a memorandum of understanding. Or do you want to do it?
Chairman, this is the one that, here we come, run up here and talk.
Okay.
You get to put on your jackets and stuff.
Well, if I'm gonna be hot, I might as well be hot right here. Mr. Chairman, this is a memorandum between the school board and the North County Department of Public Safety. There's a program wherein the board and the, actually the parole commission can work together on students that are in our system to share information. However, it has to be approved by the school board. We also have to make sure we have certain privacy requirements met with the, with the school people, and I've gone over this with Dr. Garrett, and that's all taken care of. As long as the procedure's followed, and when it meets the purposes of both the school system maintaining students involved in the system in school, also the sharing of information with the Department of Corrections, Division of Parole that can assist us in keeping kids in the school system. So I recommend it to you, it's pursuant to the 30th District, and I think we are, may I correct me, I think they're the only county in the district right now that has not, has not signed up, we're the last of the seven Western District counties.
Okay. Dr. Garrett, did you need to add anything? I'm sorry.
The child is healthy, that's one of our first people that we contact. Child is absent, if there's discipline problems, then we can contact his professional officer. Right now, we only have three students who are being served.
My initial concern was the privacy issue, and Dr. Garrett and I talked about it a little bit, and I'm satisfied with the requirements, especially the signing of the student and the parent or guardian that we're okay to participate in.
Very good. Just time we entertain a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding. Mr. Henson, second of Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smathers and Dr. Garrett. Now, Mr. Trantham, who never gets to retire, you're called on next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have five policies for presentation tonight for first reading. The policy committee has been busy, and there are several more policies in the pipeline. It's a continuous process as we make revisions to our policy manual and add new policies. The first policy tonight is C-1, graduation requirements. We've made a, proposed two changes to that, to this policy. In the general policy statement, a student must be enrolled four years, with the exception of the four-year requirement, is handled on a case-by-case basis by the school principal, and we've added a, exceptions include but are not limited to students approved for early release and early graduation. So that, that explains what the case-by-case basis may be. Where also, we have three courses of study, the career prep, the college prep and the college and university prep programs that have been in existence for several years, about six years, I guess it is, and those students have graduated, so we're going to delete those three areas, and our three areas for courses will be the occupational course of study, the future-ready corps and college and career-ready. So that's the changes to C-1.
Okay, C-1 will be tabled for 30 days for public input, or until the next regular board meeting.
Okay. The next policy is C-4, report cards, progress reports and student assessment. Under Regulation A, we've added the title, in the title, progress reports. The elementary schools and Tuscola High School are on a nine-week grading period, and we're changing the Haywood Early College to, along with Pisgah High School and Central Haywood, their grading period is every six weeks, and a midterm grading period where progress reports will be provided to parents at each of those schools. And we're adding a statement, kindergarten progress reports will be issued at a face-to-face conference with parents at the end of the first nine weeks, the second nine weeks and the end of the year. So that is, that is new to our policy. In Regulation C, we're adding grade requirements, needs improvement for first and second grade. We're also adding in third through fifth grade, letter grades for science, social studies, health and physical education. Those grades at one, those subjects at one time got S, N's and U's, but if this policy is approved, the students will receive letter grades in those subject areas. That is the proposed changes to C-4.
Okay, C-4 will be tabled until the next regular board meeting for approval. And for public input, excuse me.
Policy P-15 is employee leave policy. Changes to the policy is included in annual vacation leave on the second page, item number four. We had a state board policy that bus drivers and cafeteria staff could not take annual leave on days that students were in session, but that policy has been rescinded, so those two employee groups can take annual leave on student days by giving a five-day notice for their supervisor to locate a substitute. In another area, the policy under item H, other leave of absences, it clarifies the guidelines and requirements for folks who want a one-year leave of absence without pay for various reasons. And so this, this policy provides some guidelines for administrators and you as a board in looking at granting that leave.
Okay, so P-15 will be tabled for 30 days for public input or until our next regular board meeting.
Okay. Policy S-A8, minimum requirements for participation in athletics and other curricular activities, a change to the general policy statement. Again, our participation in extracurricular activities is restricted to the students who are enrolled full-time in the Haywood County Schools. And again, some students may have an approved early release, and therefore they, even though they might not be enrolled, it's part of approval by their administrator, and so that spells that out. So that proposed change for S-A8.
All right, S-A8 will be tabled for 30 days or until the next regular board meeting.
Okay. And the final policy tonight is SB-8. This is a proposed new policy, actually for you, the board, to consider. Remember, a couple of meetings ago, we eliminated P-21, the suggestion program, and so we bring another one to you under school board, and it would provide opportunity for community members, parents and school employees to provide suggestions and the process, regulations and procedures that would be followed in accepting the, these suggestions and a way of showing appreciation. No monetary award would be given to the, to these suggestions like it was in the former policy.
SB-8 will be tabled until the next regular board meeting or for 30 days for public input.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham, for the work of the policy.
You're welcome.
The last time we really, you present anything, but thank you for your service that you have done for the Haywood County School System, and it's been a pleasure working with you for the last nine, 10 years.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I've enjoyed working with everyone. Thirty-eight years, I feel like, is long enough. It's long, but it's short, but anyway, I'm sure you guys will select someone who will do a job even better than I will, so thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
It's gonna be hard to drive by the central office at 5:30 in the morning and not see Mr. Trantham's car sitting there. Not that I was checking on him being at work, because you knew he was there anyway. I was just making sure I was up out of bed.
Now, the addition to the agenda that we talked about earlier this evening, I would like to recognize, I think we'll have some discussion here about the proposed coaches supplement changes that could be taking place. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Harbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met recently with the athletic director from Hampton Middle, Pisgah and Tuscola, and Danny Miller did, Jim Francis and Jim Rogers and myself. What the meeting was about was the coaching slots available at both Pisgah and Tuscola, and the supplements that are awarded by us. These, these schools have now, and a lot of that's worked into it, the school sizes are now the same. You know, we have the same amount of students, basically, both places, and there was a time that wasn't the case, and we last revised this, looks like in July 2002, so it may be a little over past time. What we're looking for is, is the request of an additional 12 slots. But what, on the same token, that we're able to do is eliminate some areas that would make this a net savings of, eliminate, and I'm looking at these numbers, 15 positions, I believe it was, eliminates 25 slots that cost us $32,000, and the 12 slots is needed to 27,358. I'm not gonna get into crunching big numbers, but the net savings, if you put this supplement in place right now, it would have saved us $4,070.33. But what this does for the community guys is lets everyone know who's on those sidelines. Well, it gives, everyone has the same amount of people. If they want any positions above those, they gotta pay for them themselves. And then everyone in the community can look and look at these supplements that we're proposing, and that we want to propose, and we know that every sport has the proper amount of coaches needed. We're not heavy here and light there. And both athletic directors at Pisgah and Tuscola got together and did this format. They did all the work, basically, for us. They proposed it to us, and again, it gives everybody the same amount of people, it makes everything fair for everybody, and it saves us, it saves us a few thousand dollars in the process. And most of all, as anything we try to do as a board is, and what we should always keep in mind is the betterment of the kids. This gets every sport the proper amount of coaches they need without costing any more money, and it's actually saving some money, so that's kind of it in a nutshell.
And it hasn't been looked at since 2002, is my understanding. There's been a lot of sports, in my knowledge, that have been added.
And I won't, like I say, I don't wanna hit everybody with a lot of numbers, but we offer 104 athletic teams in this county, seven through 12. 62 high school, 42 middle, it's, 104 athletic teams is a few more than they was in 2002, and there's more needs that we have to do that.
Also, this squares you with Title IX, correct?
Absolutely.
Very good point, Mr. Rogers.
That is a very important piece of information.
There you go. Well, would anyone like to make a...
I'd like to put in form of a motion that we accept the proposal of the new athletic coaching positions and supplements.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis, I hear a second.
I'll second.
We'll have to watch the tape and see who got that one. Can we play that back in slow-mo?
Yes.
We will give it to Ms. Milner, because I have bad hearing in this ear, so I'll give her the benefit of the doubt. Anyway, we have a second of Ms. Milner. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Now, it says down here that you eliminate 25 slots, which cost you $32,389, and then you're adding 12 slots at $27,358. So is that where the savings is it coming from?
The difference...
Correct, that's the difference.
But the reason the 12 is a little bit more, if you're, if you take the 30, the 25 and divide it into 32 versus the 12 divided into the 27, is some of those, some of those positions that we made as assistants actually had to, you know, if we added, say, a wrestling assistant or a softball assistant, that position actually paid more than some of the other, you know, sort of supplement positions that we were paying for in the past. So that's, and then like a head coach for a particular sport also may have been more than what we were paying in the past for that position.
Okay, now the JV, I noticed that the football, let's see, JV assistance going from seven to nine. Now, it's saying football head, you've just got one, so is the head football coach gonna be one for the JV and the varsity? Or are you going to get a head coach out of, for a JV, or we don't, I mean, where's a head coach coming from for the JV? Or is that like a different? I always thought...
It's an assistant.
Usually, one of your assistants is the head coach.
Takes for the JV.
But will that be?
They're already an employee.
Yeah, but is that supplement, it showed as a head football coach for the JV, or is it showed as an assistant?
He is the head football coach. I got an email, and I go ahead and continue talking. I'll look it up.
Well, no, I mean, I'm asking, that's a question I have. I mean, we're, we're going from seven to nine, and you're saying JV slash assistant, so that's how it's going to work? You don't have a JV head football coach is going to be one of the assistants?
On the varsity. That's correct. What this basically does is clears up any confusion or gray areas. It's written down. It's what we're gonna pay for if they want above and beyond that, and then it's gonna come out of their own.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's sort of a gray area myself, because I looked at the policy two years ago, and it had a lot, was what we've given a lot already.
Right.
Well, I don't think it was a gray area before. I think a gray area is getting in.
Maybe my terminology was incorrect.
Yeah, who was paying, who was paying for it.
You're going to an extra person, and it was brought, says, hey, we need an extra coach. Okay, they, okay, we'll give you an extra coach. Instead of a lot to say, how many do we need? This is more of a structured program. Like I say, everybody knows what they're gonna get, and that's it. It's black and white.
And who's gonna pay for it?
And who's gonna pay for it?
Now, now, the pay, I think I have talked to Dr. Bill about it. I mean, if they're wanting a coach above and beyond, let's just say nine, since that adds about football coach, are we gonna pay for it, and then they gonna reimburse us? Or are they gonna, how's that gonna work?
They'll do it after the season, and they'll reimburse us.
So, after the season?
We will send them a bill saying that they owe X amount, and then they will pay that amount back to us.
And then, let's just say, suggestion, what if they don't pay us back? Then what's gonna happen?
Then, we will take it out of some kind of school fund. We'll have to. They'll pay it.
We know where they live.
Well, thank you for working on this. I think it needs to be updated when it comes to everything, but I think we still, I mean, everybody knows how many coaches there is, and I don't think that was a problem. I think other stuff is a problem.
Any other question or discussion?
We're still not saying that they can't have 15 coaches if they want.
That's correct.
Out of the school funds.
Right. Any other question or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Also, Chairman Francis, from that meeting too, and this is, again, for discussion. Our athletic directors, whether we wanna pay them that way or not, they're 12-month employees, and I think we need to consider accepting that fact and paying them on it. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Because they're at events away from their family, they're all hours of the night, and no longer do we shut school down, and our ADs are finished. They're not finished anymore. And right now, they're 11 months, and I just think that we, we should at least consider making them 12-month employees.
What we could do is do a cost analysis on that, run it back through the finance committee, and that way, we can see if their funds are there to do that.
I mean, move the supplement that they get, just give them a month of employment.
And just, we can look at that next month. Any other discussion on the coaches? Do you have anything else, Mr. Harbin?
It's all ahead.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
Right, well.
And the work of that committee. I know a lot of folks met on that, and that tough subject, but we got it hammered out and did a great job of resolving that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, for getting it out, and then stepping back, sending us. Just kidding. Thank you, thank you for bringing that there.
When you got, you got good people, it doesn't hurt. This led us. Now, we'll have a report from the finance committee, Mr. Jim Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee has met, and we have gone over the monthly financial reports. Mr. Phillips did an excellent job in reporting them to us, and looking at those reports, everything seemed to be in order. So, at this point in time, I would like to bring before the board in the form of a motion to approve those regular monthly financial reports.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the regular monthly financial reports. Do I hear a second?
Say.
Second, Mr. Harbin. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I have another motion that I would like to bring before the board to approve Dr. Garrett's proposal of recognizing the central office with a possibility of using an additional $2,500, and this is in reference to, they're wanting to add, with Mr. Trantham leaving, they're wanting to take that position and try to reorganize that into two full-time positions, and they're gonna need a little money possibly to, to be able to do that. So, I would like to bring that before the, the board.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve Dr. Garrett's restructuring of the central office administration as presented to the finance committee. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the finance committee?
I believe I have number 17 and 18 as well, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Number 17, it's the interim budget resolution. We need to, and everybody has this on their laptop or their iPad to look at, this is in order for the school board to continue paying the bills and budget, seeing as how the state and the federal government has not set their budget yet and let us know how much money we've got coming in. So, this is an interim budget resolution to allow Dr. Garrett to continue to pay the funds.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the interim budget resolution. Do we have a second, Mr. Rogers?
I tell you what, y'all, quick on the draw around here tonight.
Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And number 18 goes hand in hand with number 17, the June budget amendment revision. This allows Dr. Garrett to go ahead and pay the bills until we, you know, from this point until July, where we can set the budget where we know what money's coming in.
Okay.
And she will report back to the board based on this in the July meeting.
July meeting. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to authorize our superintendent to continue the bills. I'm gonna recognize Ms. Shannable as the second one.
I'm ready to make it, I'm ready for you.
Is your buzzer working? Ms. Shannable, you have a second.
Thank you.
We have the minutes reflected, Ms. Shannable has a second to, to the motion. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that is all the finance committee has at this time.
All right, thank you for the hard work of the finance committee. I know y'all work hard and a lot of stuff going on, and we've got great people in those jobs. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for what you do, and, and your staff. Thank you.
I'm gonna amenity on that, Mr. Chairman. That's a lot of work.
At this time, we recognize Dr. Ann Garrett for our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have 14 separation from employments, you have two leave of absences, and you have one employee status change. For your approval, you have one leave of absence, nine employments, employee status changes you have one, excuse me, you have 24. You have one contracted service, you have four substitutes, and you have seven administrative contracts.
At this time, we entertain a motion that the personnel be approved as presented by Dr. Garrett. Ms. Shannable made the motion. Sorry. Do I hear Ms. a second?
Second.
Second of Ms. Milner. We take our job serious.
I know we do.
But we have some fun along the way, too. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Shannable, second of Ms. Milner. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Garrett.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, it is a pleasure to introduce the new principal at Clyde Elementary, Mr. Clint Connor.
Chairman, members of the board, I'd just like to say thank you, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nalty, thank you as well. I look forward to the opportunity of working with the staff at Clyde, and I mean you staying here this late to support me. I appreciate it very much. I've had nine wonderful years here in Haywood County. It's a great system. I spent seven years at Pisgah High School, and I wanted to thank Danny Miller and Mr. Upton for bringing me into this county. It's been a great experience. Seven years there were, were great, and then I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Barker and Mr. Jason Hines two years later, and it was a great experience. I didn't know if I was ready for the opportunity to move into the assistant principal role. I had to, you know, to think about it a lot, and then I came and met Ms. Barker, and she mentioned, she said, "You're scared to come do this with me." And I believe she twisted my arm, and I, it's been the greatest decision I've ever made, and I appreciate it very much. Her claim to fame is taking me from a coach and making me a nerd, so to speak, so that might still be up for debate. With that being said, I'd like to, you know, with me and my education and my career right now, I'd like to make the analogy of a, of a coach right now. You know, it feels like I'm in the preseason. I'm undefeated, so to speak, right now. I've made no, no decisions, no calls, but with that, I know what, what's to come. There's several hard decisions to be made. There's, there's a lot of, you know, changes, hires, lessons to be taught, tests to be taken, and I'm taking that first step today. But with that, you know, the, the thing that comforts me the most is, I just want y'all to know that every decision that'll be made at that school will be in the best interest of the kids. I just... To me, I think if you put that first, and, you know, you could look whoever in the eye and let them know what you're all about, and that's the kids. Everywhere I've been, I've loved the kids, whether it was Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, or Haywood County, I've had great relationships with the kids. The colleagues I've worked with have been awesome, and I hope to bring that to Clyde Elementary as well. I think it's my job to hire great teachers at Clyde Elementary and improve the ones that are there currently. I'm so excited about this position, and I look forward to it. You know, the one thing I'd like to say is maybe when I address that staff at Clyde Elementary here next fall is, you know, hopefully, the 2013-14 school year will be one of the highest achieving school years they've ever had until the next year. You know, I think we can get better and move on. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to it, and I'm, I'm so lucky to be working Haywood County. Thank you.
Mr. Connor, thank you for your ability and willingness to serve in Haywood County, and we're lucky to have you also. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
For being... No further business. Meeting adjourned.